Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Alderman meeting. We will begin by the minutes of the previous, uh, meeting, September eighth, twenty twenty. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? I'm hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of accepting the previous minutes meeting, uh, minutes of the previous meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
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 No opposed? Motion carries. We are on to outside the rail. Do we have any members of the community, uh, here to address the board on matters that are not on the agenda?
Hello?
Hello? Who do we have here?
Uh, this is Brian Root. Uh, I live in five Sharon Drive in Rutland. Um, uh, I'd like to say hi to everybody, et cetera. Uh, welcome back, Mr. Blair. Nice to see you back in the saddle. Wishing you best. So, my issue, um, is of how when Sharon, well, I purchased this house three years ago this coming November, my wife and I. Uh, throughout the winter, I dealt with snow and ice, uh, water, et cetera, in the driveway as an ice skating pond, et cetera. So, I saw, uh, Mayor Blair in the spring of two thousand eighteen mentioned how, you know, my driveway is a little lower than the, uh, road, uh, just as we were out and about in the community, talking to each other as we do. And he said, uh, he talked to, uh, Mr. Wenberg about putting me on a list of getting this issue taken care of. So, coincidentally, a couple of weeks or so later, I saw Mayor Blair again, and, um, he offered that. Um, he spoke to Mr. Wenberg and how my name is on this list. That's good. So, two and a half years later, nothing has been done about it. I have no reason to believe the mayor did not speak to Mr. Wenberg, and, uh, Mr. Wenberg did not put me on a list. Um, I do not know, uh, anything about this list, whether it's actually, um, there is one, for starters. I'd like to see the list with my name on it. But more than anything, um, as they were just, um, resurfacing, tearing up and resurfacing Victor Drive, which intersects my street, um, I tried to call into City Hall and talk to Mr. Wenberg, uh, and explain how, you know, this would be a perfect time to kill two birds with one stone, finish Victor, and possibly patch my driveway, so I don't get this huge puddle, which at times can be several inches deep, about twelve feet in from the road and double car wide. Um, so unsuccessfully, what did not answer, I talked to a lady named Kate, and she says, the person I really want to talk to about this project is, uh, Mr. Sears, who was on vacation, um, and gave me his number to call. I called Mr. Sears on eight twenty-four, about eight o'clock in the morning, very polite gentleman, as everybody's been, women are gentlemen, and, uh, expressed my concern about getting my driveway fixed as you're working on Victor again. He said he'd try to get up and take a look at it. So, I heard nothing, and, um, on eight thirty-one, around eight thirty in the morning, I called Mr. Sears and left a voicemail. And I don't know, as to today's date, whether or not he ever came up, but I have not heard from him. So, as Victor is being torn up, I went up and talked to the crew from the, uh, contracting company. They're very nice, again. Explained how, you know, if they could do anything to help me out, um, with any extra patch when they're done, um, I'd appreciate it. They couldn't do so without any consent from the city folks, if you will, which is understandably, that's good. Um, so, the final paving was done just last week, and, uh, I still have no repairs done to my driveway. Some of the neighbors, um, have had some patches put back into their driveway, a couple of feet in, et cetera. Um, a neighbor across the street, um, had issues with getting their driveway fixed for quite a long time. Reverted to social media to get this done, which is not my style, I'm not even on social media. They believe, uh, everybody's a little, a lot better than that in the city, that, uh, I don't need to do such a thing. Um, other neighbors have mentioned that they've never seen so much water come down the street and in my driveway, how I couldn't really appreciate this, and I don't, nor does my wife. So, um, I'm simply trying to get this resolved, obviously. Um, upon the first layer of pavement on Victor, uh, a couple of days later, we had a massive washout and a heavy rainstorm, as Victor was covered with a good amount of rocks. Um, I'm coming home from work, and I'm videotaping this river of mud and water running down Victor onto Sharon into my driveway. As I'm walking up to Victor, a neighbor pulls in and starts videotaping a similar issue, um, in his driveway, which is on Victor. Um, as the water dries, uh, now I have some mud and dried up dirt, which, um, is very annoying as my vehicles get covered, and, um, the mud and dried dirt, um, come up my driveway into my garage, which is under the house. So, now I'm having to deal with washing my vehicles, which I have three, um, and vacuuming out my driveway. It's not only time-consuming, very annoying, to say the least, it's getting expensive by running up my water bill or having to go to the car wash. Um, I would like to know why, um, after two-plus years, that I can't get any resolution here. I really don't need to waste, uh, the Board of Alderman's time with everything going on in the city. We did bond X amount of money for the roads, they look beautiful, and, uh, other people, you know, some folks are getting a little better treatment than others, um, et cetera, for whatever reason, lucky them. I'm just simply asking to resolve this without any further ado, and any further, um, interest on my part of having to keep track of my expenses, et cetera. Um, is there any possibility, anybody has an idea why this hasn't been done, or what we can do to get it done? Some of you folks, uh, on the board, if you're there, go by my house, as you live in this neighborhood, in your vehicle, or walk by. Some of the residents are either friends or relatives of city employees or former city employees. They're all friends of mine, very good neighbors, I know some of the families personally, so it's not a personal issue. Again, lucky them, they got their driveways taken care of. Some of the driveways on Victor haven't been completed. One of the folks who was also videoing, the day I was, is an employee, so as I saw him. Um, back on nine sixteen, I was coming home from work, and a city, um, employee from the DPW, I presume, was putting down the final grass seed, and I mentioned my issue. He was very kind to come down and look at my driveway and couldn't believe that, you know, the dirt is there, um, that it does need to be at least, nothing else swept out that he would talk to his boss, who was not Mr. Sears, to get this hopefully taken care of. Nothing has been done about it since then either. Um, but I guess in fairness, they didn't realize when the washout on Victor happened that it ran down to Sharon, and unfortunately, I have the lowest driveway. Again, another neighbor above me has a good pile of mud in their driveway, but I don't know that they're worried about it. Um, so, I've taken videos, I've taken pictures of the depth of the water, the amount of the water. Again, the wintertime, it's a, it's an ice skating rink when I'm out there shoveling. Uh, yeah, and when the snow melts, it doesn't go through your dr- your snowblower. I was even frustrated enough at one point during the rain, uh, after the rain, to sweep the puddle of mud back into the road, uh, one time, and after it got done washing back in and dried in the road, what did? You know, I have mud in the road, and I have the sediment from my driveway, which is falling apart, um, because of this time period of never being finished when they raised the road. Um, so now it doesn't look any better, it's getting worse. Um, I simply just would like this taken care of. The neighbor across the street, um, again, had to wait a very long period of time. Finally got there, it was taken care of last year. Um, anybody have any suggestions how to resolve this, um, you know, the best we can?
Uh, Alderman Clifford, I saw your hand come up first.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, thanks for the call, Brian. Um, I was wondering, since I think the Commissioner is on, if he could address this?
I'd appreciate it, thank. Hello?
Hello?
Uh, Mr. Wenberg, Dave, or Jeff?
Yes, um, I, I would have to talk to some folks, this is first I've heard of it. Um, I'm, you know, can't speak to it tonight.
Well, I don't expect you to. Um, you know, I talked to the DPW guy who was doing the seeding. He suggested this list is, you know, kind of generic. Now, like I say, I have no reason to believe that the mayor did not speak to you two and a half years ago, roughly. I do not have any reason to believe that you didn't put my name on a list if asked to, but I'd like to know where this list is with my name on it. Um, you know, again, are we picking and choosing who we're taking care of? Um, I hope not. Um, again, I believe everybody's better than that, this community is a much better community. I've lived here most of my sixty years, I've owned four homes, two in this neighborhood. The last one, um, um, I actually patched in the road that fell apart after paving years later, at my own expense for a few bucks, a couple of times, a couple of years, with some patch. This is a little bigger project. Um, again, other neighbors have had to wait their turn on this list and personally contact you via social media. I don't intend to do that, I appreciate in person this phone call. Um, I've known who you are for a long time. Um, when you're mayor, you actually lived in the neighborhood I grew up in, as well as, uh, others. I live in this neighborhood, the others on the board have grown up in, so, you know, nobody knew. Um, I know people's names, people may know me, um, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, without any further. Hello?
Yeah, this is, this is Jeff. Um, I will, uh, I'll check into this first thing in the morning, and-
I appreciate it.
And, um, try to find out if this has been evaluated, if this, you, you deserve a response, and if you haven't gotten one, there's no excuse for that, so.
Well, my, nothing personal, again, you know, everybody's busy, you're trying to do your best, simply just would like this done.
Yep, I understand.
Okay. Well, thank you.
If I could speak up, this is the mayor. I do remember two and a half years ago, talking to Brian, a couple of different times at a grocery store. I do remember at least evening at this, the Commissioner. Um, you know, it's, uh, very, uh, easily could have got lost in the, in the shuffle. That's no excuse. Um, I, I haven't seen you, Brian, in, in quite a spell, so I wasn't even aware that it was still an issue. But, uh, I will make sure, uh, tomorrow morning, as the Commissioner will, that we will look into it and try to get, uh, what the issue is, um, uh, settled, so.
Well, thank you, David. Yeah, no, no, again, I appreciate it, and if we can get it done before the snow flies, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, but if people can look into it and, you know, contact myself about what you see and what you plan on doing, that's all I'm asking at this point. Again, yes, I'd like it done, but understandably, it's not gonna happen today or tomorrow, and, uh, sooner than later would be the best.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
Alright, thank you all, take care. Any more questions?
Saw a couple of their hands, start with Alderman Humphrey, do you still have a question?
Yeah, hello?
We don't hear her.
Alderman Humphrey, we can't hear you. Uh, let me jump to Alderman Davis, real quick.
Sure.
It's really not a question, I'm just gonna ask if, uh, the mayor and or the Commissioner, once they have an opportunity to look at the problem and determine the course of action, if they could just inform the board so we, we were aware that the loop has been closed and action is gonna be taken.
Happy to.
Thank you, Alderman Davis. Uh, Alderman Garuso.
Yeah, uh, Brian, I'd like to thank you and commend you for coming to us. Uh, uh, I grew up there, the, the, my parents' house was the farmhouse for your land. I watched your house be built, and I don't know which one it is, I watched every house be built in Charter Hills.
And I was refused, yes, in part.
I watched your road be built, I got to ride on some of this equipment then. But where I live, uh, I went down to, uh, Public Works, 'cause I had the same problem, only I had a lake in my backyard, and resurfaced the road, they put in gutters, they, they did a absolutely beautiful jo- job, they tilted the road more toward my house. So, I hired the paving company, and they put a hump in my driveway. Years later, they paved the road again, it was higher than my hump, so I hired the paving company again to put a hump. Now you can just about get whiplash in my driveway, but I don't have the problem anymore, so that was the way I solved it, but I commend you.
Well, if I was in a position to want to repave my driveway, it'd be one thing, I would not be calling you folks, but when I- you know, when I, when I-
I put a hump at the end of it, I, it's terrible, it's absolutely terrible, but the road pitches towards the house and everything, and I commend you, 'cause I didn't get anywhere with the city, and like I said, I, I spent a lot of time on it and whatever. So, good for you, I'm proud of you, and I hope the city takes care of you.
Well, again, it's nothing personal, I know most of you folks, and you live in the neighborhood I grew up in too, Sam, I wish you the best too. Um, so simply, I can't believe when we're, you know, our contractors or even ourselves are paving roads, that there isn't some leftover that's just gonna get thrown into a pile to harden, you know? Um, it's a little more than I can do myself, and again, if I, like yourself, was willing, ready to pave, I would, wouldn't even be calling you, I'd just plain do it, I'm not ready to pave. Um, but I, I'm getting tired of swimming and skating.
Well, good for you, we'll, keep us posted, like Alderman Davis said, keep us posted, please.
Certainly, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for calling, sir. Uh, it sounds like we've heard this, and you should expect a pretty much immediate response this week.
Alright, I'm sorry.
No, thank you very much, we appreciate you calling in.
Alright, thank you, goodbye, everybody, thanks.
Still outside the rail, do we have any other members of the public here to address the board on matters not on the agenda? Alright, I'm hearing nothing. So, we are moving on to communications from the mayor, Mayor Blair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, good evening, everyone. I do have three items for you tonight. Couple of them are rather short. First one, um, I have included a memo in your packet, which you have, I'm sure, read, uh, with my nomination to fill a vacancy on the Rutland City Police Commission. Um, I want to, uh, begin by thanking Chris Soliski, who has recently resigned for his service on the commission, and we wish him very well in his future endeavors. It is my pleasure to submit the name of Jeanette Langston. Uh, Jeanette, uh, came to Rutland through the State of Stay program a couple of years ago. Jeanette has a rich history working for the Forest Service with many interactions with law enforcement. I believe with her knowledge, experience, and enthusiasm, Jeanette will be a great addition to the Rutland City Police Commission. So, having said that, Jeanette, if you are on the call, would you like to briefly address the board before I ask for a table of the nomination? Jeanette?
Sure, um, hi, everybody, good evening, um, this is Jeanette Langston. So, I just wanted to thank you, Mayor, for your vote of confidence for me. And, uh, I really appreciate this opportunity to, um, serve the Rutland community with the skills that I've gained over the years. And being a new person, I hope I can bring just, uh, you know, some open insight without having the histories and, and things that everyone has here, that possibly I can come in with a blank slate and hear both sides, uh, very openly, and help people come together. And that is my goal in doing this, is to use my law enforcement experience with the forest there with two, to help people communicate difficult, conflicting, um, things that might arise, um, with our police department and the things that are going on in the world right now. Um, I'm excited to participate and really happy to have this opportunity. So, feel free to call me, or text, or email me, um, with any questions you guys have.
Okay, great, thank you, Jeanette. So, I would ask, as is the protocol, if the board could please table the nomination.
I'll move.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion to table, and that has been seconded. Um, all those in favor of tabling this nomination till the next meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
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 No opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So, second up tonight, um, is, uh, the Vermont League of, uh, City and Towns Town Fair is actually approaching very quickly, um, and it is actually next week. And, um, this year, of course, as a lot of these, uh, town meetings and, uh, our meetings, and most al- most all of them at the state level, it's being held virtually. Um, I've been your voting delegate the last three years. Um, this year, Jeff Wenberg actually has offered to fill a role, uh, for, uh, on behalf of the city. It would be as a voting delegate, and that would be at the annual meeting. I think there are other members of the city government who plan on attending some of the seminars, but this would be as your voting delegate for the annual meeting. So, um, I, uh, think I would, um, I'm, I'm happy to have him do that. And, uh, I'm going to ask if the Board of Alderman would please make a motion to designate Jim, Jeff Wenberg, Rutland City's voting delegate for this year's Vermont League and Cities and Towns Town Fair. That's my request.
Second.
Um, can I ask who moved that?
Do we need to suspend rules?
I moved it. Oh, s- suspend the rules, yeah. So, I'll move.
I'll second.
Perfect, so we have a motion to suspend the rules, and that's been seconded. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 No opposed? Motion carries.
And thank you very much, and lastly, uh, just want to reiterate and remind, uh, the, the board that City Hall will officially open to the public on October first, we are right on schedule. We have, uh, put together a, uh, list of guidelines and protocols, which will be posted and in place for the opening, posted on the doors and throughout the building. I want to, uh, thank Judy Fraser, my administrative assistant, who's also the head of the Safety Committee, for putting together, uh, that list of protocols and, uh, to keep, uh, all our, uh, employees and the general public safe when they come to visit at City Hall. And, uh, October first is coming fast, the end of next week. Um, we look forward to, uh, um, to opening the building back up and trying to get some things back to some semblance of normalcy. Uh, so that's all I have for tonight, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Blair. Uh, real quick, we had a motion to suspend the rules. That did pass, we just do need to take the formal vote on appointing Jeff Wenberg, and we need a motion for that.
So, I'll move the motion.
I'll second.
So, I have a motion that's been seconded to, uh, appoint, uh, Jeff Wenberg as our delegate to the Vermont League of City and Towns. Uh, is there any debate or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 No opposed? Motion carries. Alright, thank you. Um, and before we let Mayor go, is there any comments or questions for him? I am hearing and seeing none, so thank you very much, Mayor Blair.
You're welcome.
Alright, so we are on to additions and deletions to the agenda. I'm seeing none here, does anybody have any? Nope. Uh, so we're on to reports and letters from department heads and officials, Attorney Blumer's executive session request, that we will have moved to the end of the meeting. So, first up, Treasurer Markowski, Treasurer's Report for August, and this was emailed to you. Treasurer Markowski.
Thank you, um, I'm not sure if you had a chance to review the packet, I know there's a lot in there. I did add one schedule that I hope you found helpful. Just monitoring our status when we had set that tax rate, there were some savings that were identified. So, throughout the year, we'll monitor that, um, and I'll provide that with the quarterly reports, because the, what we post when we're doing the accounting is, we're posting the, um, official approved budget in there. So, I think it's important that, because we took those steps to, to cut back, that we just have some monitoring at the department level, so we'll continue to do that quarterly. Um, just some highlights right now, August, um, uh, you can see that our, our cash level, we have two-point-three million in the pooled cash account, um, that's pretty low right now for end of August, but that was going into a tax collection, and we still, we have some bonds out there that we're waiting for, um, reimbursement on some expenses. So, that's why you see that, um, the delinquency report, I just want to note, we had, we actually used the CSJA facility to conduct tax sales that we had to delay from postponed in March. We had originally had eight scheduled and two paid off, so we had six tax sales in August. Um, and we do expect several, several of those will pay during the redemption period, so, um, just a note on that, um. I just wanted to note, um, delinquent tax collection was really strong from, uh, July one to, I just ran some numbers, we collected almost two-hundred-and-fifty thousand in delinquent tax, delinquent taxes and a couple of tax sales that paid off, so that's a good sign, and I hope we can keep that, um, going through this year. Um, so that's been a really good, uh, strong collection effort. Um, and I, I only report on the tax, and I think I should do a little bit more, maybe report on some of the water and sewer, 'cause that, if you look at the delinquent tax, the delinquent report, water and sewer delinquencies are going up, and I know that, um, and just speaking with DPW, I think we're gonna get back on track and getting some people on some payment agreements that, um, we need to work through. So, um, I just wanted to hit on those things tonight, um, any questions?
Thank you, Treasurer Markowski. If anyone has a question, I will just ask them to chime in, I'm experiencing, uh, connection difficulties at the moment.
Yes, I have a question.
Jump right in then.
Okay, uh, the, uh, delinquent, uh, properties, what properties were those? Do you know?
The ones that, um, tax sales, or?
Yeah, the tax sale properties.
That, that paid off, is that what you're asking?
No, I want to know what locations were auctioned off.
Uh, let me see, 'cause we had two, let me see if I can find my notes quickly. Um, I don't have the list-
If you don't have it, okay, I'll call you later, it's not a problem.
Yeah, I can send them to you, um, because we had two sets, and I, I'll give you what we had in August, so.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, are there any other, uh, Alderman, sorry.
Yeah, just quickly, I was just looking at the report, Mary, um, you said, it says that there's been no activity in the Transit Fund, Transit Center account?
They, um, actually did less monthly, and that, as of August thirty-first, we hadn't processed those invoices, that's why. So, that's just gonna be, just some lag there.
Alright, perfect, thank you.
Any other questions for the treasurer? I'm hearing and seeing-
Move to receive and file.
Second, anybody?
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion to receive and file, it's been seconded. Um, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
No opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Treasurer Markowski.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Barbara Spalding, uh, the CARES Act Funding Resolution, this is pages one and two of your packet. Uh, Barbara, I'll hand it over to you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. The resolution is, we're asking you to sign it in support of the CDBG CARES Act funding for the Brock, uh, increase in refrigeration and freezer capacity. The application is due September twenty-fifth, and on the resolution, there is a paragraph that says something about, um, a letter from the Regional Planning Commission, normally I do submit that with the resolution. I didn't have it at the time, I do have it now, so I just want you to be aware that I, I have received a letter from the Regional Planning Commission stating that the project is in, uh, compliance with their plan. So, that we are just asking that you, um, authorize, uh, Matt Wickham to sign the resolution in support of the application on behalf of the Board of Alderman, and I thank you.
Do we have a motion to authorize myself to sign the resolution in support of the application? Ask the Board of Alderman.
So, I'll move.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion, it's been, uh, we have a motion to suspend the rules, and it's been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I have a question, and suspend the, I have a question.
Uh, go ahead, Alderman Garuso.
Why do we sus- Why do we suspend the rules? We have something on the agenda. If something comes into the board that's not in the agenda, we suspend. I'm just asking. I thought years ago, we never suspend the rules when something's on the agenda. This we knew was coming. I'm just asking.
Yeah, this.
If it was not, if it was something brought to us, we would suspend the rules, but this was already here on our packet, so it's not a surprise. But whatever, I, I voted in some favor. I just thought we didn't.
Sam.
Yes.
It's if it has not been to committee.
Okay. Thank you very much.
President Wickham?
Uh, yes.
Lisa, I'm gonna deign from this.
Okay. Note the abstentions. Um, so we have a motion to suspend that has been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And I believe we have a motion to authorize Matt Wickham to sign resolution in support of the application on behalf of the Board of Aldermen.
So I'll move. Second.
Alright, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you all. Have a good evening. Stay warm.
Alright, up next, we have Clerk Heck, Coronavirus Municipal Records Digitization Grant Update. Clerk Heck?
Uh, thank you very much. Um, Alderman Tori at the last meeting was asking in regards about CARES grant and those kind of things. So seeing the meeting is moving along so smoothly, I think it'll take about an hour of your time to explain some of the grant processes that I've been, uh, established with out there and stuff. But as Alderman Tori's smiling, I guess I won't take that long to explain that. But uh, Alderman Tori, I did want you to know that we were able to, uh, um, obtain a grant uh, to digitize our land records. So we will have the ability to go back 40 years. Um, it's kind of a bittersweet thing for me because, uh, I love having people involved doing records research and stuff, but unfortunately COVID is probably not going to be the last time that this is going to happen to us. We may have to shut down the entire world. And yet, uh, we still need to do business outside there and stuff. So uh, the project is fairly, uh, substantial. We're going to have about 260,000 pages that are going to need to be digitized and then indexed. Probably take about four months to do that. The associated cost is around $48,000, maybe a little bit less. We were able to get a grant for, uh, approximately $37,000 of that. So the rest of that money will come out of the Preservation Fund that I've, uh, been squirreling away for, uh, these kind of things, uh, down the road. There's a substantial amount of money in there. So it won't affect the taxpayer at all, uh, as far as that goes. So hopefully that'll make, uh, Alderman Davis happy in that capacity as well. But it is a project that will be a great thing and will allow us to, uh, have folks basically sit at home in front of their fireplace, petting their cat and doing the work at the same time. So uh, we look forward to getting that done right around the first of the year. Um, I know Sean's happy. I can see that as far as that goes. Uh, Sean Chargens on the phone is, uh, or is on video as well. And the other thing too, uh, in case you, uh, have been by City Hall, you'll see some boxes that have been installed on the Strong's Avenue side and the, uh, Washington Parking Lot side with some very bright fluorescent, uh, uh, orange duct tape around it saying ballots only. Those were ballot box that I was able to procure through the Secretary of State. Uh, they were approximately about $1,800 and, uh, we're going to be fully reimbursed for both of those as well too. So this upcoming election, I can tell you all right now, is going to be a monster. And I don't mean that in a good way as far as that goes. We have seen, I have seen more action on this one, uh, certain election than maybe all the other 12 years combined. It's just been incredible. How many people are looking to volunteer at the poll? Uh, require absentee ballots, wanting to vote as soon as we're open and stuff. So this is going to be a very, very big election and I look forward to utilizing those, uh, those, uh, boxes outside to collect ballots. So give, uh, give our, uh, citizens multiple opportunities on ways to get their, uh, ballots back to us. As you know, uh, you hear a lot of, uh, rumors out there about the potential of the post office not being, being able to deliver and stuff. And so we're going to need to educate the public and let them know that there are still several ways. Ballot boxes outside are a way that can be utilized. They are very secure. They are bolted down. They're not going to be going anywhere. Um, also October 1st, as Mayor Lair stated, we will be open. We're looking forward to having our citizens back within the clerk's office. Uh, we have been utilizing, um, you know, those avenues as well at this point in time. Records researchers have been coming in. We're seeing multiple people, uh, at a time as well. It seems to be working out pretty well. The protocol is working good with the, uh, disinfecting processes that we're taking and stuff. Very, uh, pleased. Uh, and happy with my staff and, uh, the extra work that they've been doing to make sure that this is a, a safe environment. Um, and also, um, the polls will be open regular hours on November 3rd, 7 to 7. So if, uh, people get their ballots and they still don't feel, you know, safe about putting them in the mail, those are three different ways that they can, uh, get those ballots delivered by either going to their polls, coming to City Hall, or utilizing those drop boxes. So but I just thought I'd share a little bit of good news with Alderman Tori was asking those questions and, uh, within the clerk's office, I took full advantage of what money I could get to do that. And I think that's going to be a huge project, Chris, and I'm looking forward to it at the end of the day. Thank you for your time.
Henry, if you can take a look at weather and sports too, please?
Sure.
Alderman Tori?
Good job.
I put, uh, to my appreciation to Clerk Heck for going after that money. Uh, it's things like that will help us move forward. So thank you very much. Um, on the ballot question, um, if someone has to get a ballot at home and they lose it or whatnot, are they able to go to the polls and get a new ballot or do they only have the one that, that they were sent?
You know, at the end of the day, um, the Secretary of State's making it sure that you will have the opportunity to vote no matter what. And I say that in, uh, in a more of a positive sense. So, uh, those things are going to happen. There's no question. The, uh, today was the date that all those ballots are being mailed out to everyone in Vermont. They're starting that, that drop right now. So it's pretty early in the process. But I think within the office, we've also had a discussion. Um, the Secretary of State has, uh, come up with an authorization form that basically states that, uh, you know, if you're requesting another ballot or if you go to the polls and they say, you know, you were mailed the ballot on this date, you know, what happened to it? And they say, I laughed that the dog ate it. My kids, you know, did whatever with it colored on it. They'll just make you sign that affirmation stating that you are only voting one ballot. You will sign that, we'll collect that, and then they'll give you a ballot and you'll go ahead and vote. So, um, you know, we're getting ready to print about 2,000 affirmation forms because I think it's going to probably take that many once we get going. Every person that we send, uh, an absentee request out, we're going to send that form out as well. Um, and there's some dialogue out there, not very positive, not to beat up Jim Condos, but he really stuck his foot in his mouth the other day on, was it VPR? Where he was saying that when you receive your ballot, there's going to be two envelopes. And just like the primary, you'll have your ballot and then you have a envelope that you have to place that ballot in. You will need to sign that envelope. I can tell you, this is the first time that that has happened ever in my history for a general election. Primary yes, but never for a general election. So a lot of people may miss that signature, which technically by state statute and law classified that ballot as defective and it should not be counted. Mr. Condos went and told people on VPR that you can basically, that the clerk can call that person and have them come in and sign it. And that's not what we do. We do enough handholding for certain individuals out there. We're not going to do that. I mean, this is an election that your right to, uh, vote will be, uh, granted. The affirmation form will be there. We look forward to getting those things distributed, but we're not calling people if they don't sign that certificate as far as that goes. So when I say this is a monster, I, I mean it not only in size wise, but also this is a very complicated, uh, election potential. And the education part that we need to do for our citizens is, is one of those things that we're starting on. And every day when we're getting 50 or 60 phone calls about the election, that's what we're explaining to them. When people are requesting absentee ballots, we're asking them to wait at least 10 days from today. If their ballot doesn't show up, then we're basically going to have them call us back and then we'll start that process of reissuing a ballot for them and stuff. So, um, we're trying to do our due diligence and the best uh, in regards to make sure that this is a very fair and equitable, uh, you know, election. And all the years I've been doing this, I've never had any concerns about the process of how we've done it. I always went to bed, you know, and slept very well the night of an election, knowing that it was done very efficiently and to the best and most, uh, honorable standards. But I can tell you, I'm just not sure how it's going to work out. I'm hopeful that everybody will do what is, um, what is right and vote one ballot and try not to do anything else other than that. But we'll have to see how that goes.
Thank you, Clerk Heck. Uh, uh, any additional questions? Alright, I'm hearing and seeing none. So we will move on to reports of standing committees. We have Alderman Ryan, Community and Economic Development.
The Community and Economic Development Committee met virtually on September 17th, 2020 to discuss the Center Street Pilot Project updates and next steps. Committee members present were myself, the Chair, Alderman Sharon Davis, the Vice Chair, Alderman Natori, Gueruzo, and Talbot. Alderman present, present were President Wickham, Alderman Humphrey, and Gillum. Others present were Executive Director of the RRA Brennan Duffy, uh, the Regional Planning Commission Devin Neary, Treasurer Markowski, Chief Lovett, Attorney Blumer, and Gordon DeShillo from the Herald. The meeting started at 5:46 PM. Brennan opened the meeting, gave an overview and status update on the Center Street Pilot Project. He talked about the decommissioning plan and how the Parks and Rec Department will be taking out the barriers and parklets to store over the winter for next spring. There's consensus from the committee on how well constructed and aesthetically appealing Center Street looks. The committee acknowledged their, uh, appreciation for all departments, community members, and businesses who work so hard to make Center Street a success. Devin Neary presented and reviewed the Center Street re- redesigned survey results, which included questions ranging from the functionality and elements of Center Street to quantitative data on traffic, bicycle and pedestrian safety and accessibility. See document Center Street Pilot Study and Survey Results, which is in your packet. Devin also shared photos of the newly designed Center Street. Again, see document Center Street Pilot Study Photos. Lastly, Brennan introduced a grant opportunity via VT Trans for a scoping study. This grant would further support the design concepts and traffic studies for the Center Street project, which would be the first step in the planning process. Brennan stressed that this project would not allow us to study the cost of moving some of the infrastructure, i.e. relocation of sidewalks and underground work. He stated that it made sense to lock in and focus on the design first. Once that is complete, they would come back and say, this is what we would like to do, and then move forward with how we do that and how much it would cost. Brennan stated that, uh, Devin has created a draft for the VT Trans program that the application is due on September 30th. The grant requires the city to contribute a 20% cash match. The proposed project budget, budget would be 30,000 plus the 6,000 for a total of $36,000. Alderman Natori asked if the Planning Commission or the city via the RRA would be applying for this grant. Devin said it would need to go through the city and the Planning Commission will provide any assistance. Brennan stated that there's about $16,000 left from the Center Street Pilot Study Allocation Fund, which is buyout program from the spring and suggested that six, the $6,000 cash match be taken out of that ballot. Alderman Davis moved to support the resolution for the bike pet grant and for the 6,000 city, $6,000 city match to come from the buyout money. The motion was seconded by Alderman Gueruzo. Motion passed 5 to 0 and I so move.
That good.
Alright, so we have a motion and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate on the issue? Uh, Alderman Depoy?
Matt, alright, can you just restate the motion, please?
Can you hand it to me? Uh, the motion is to support the resolution for the bike, uh, PD grant for 6,000 city match to come from the buyout money. And that was seconded by Alderman Gueruzo, made by Alderman Davis, seconded by Alderman Gueruzo. Any further discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor of supporting this resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Alderman Ryan. Uh, next? Reports of select committees? There are none. Reports of representatives? There are none. Positions, letters, miscommunications, there are none. Or control commissioners, we have not. Unfinished business? Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? I am hearing and seeing nothing. So on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Alderman Gueruzo?
Yeah, just a quick thing. Uh, uh, Mr. Pratt from Sheldon Place in Rutland has brought this to my attention and, and I've seen it occasionally. Um, the, involves Terrell Street, Sheldon Place, and Norton. And I'd like to make a, a motion to refer to the Traffic Committee. Um, see what occasionally, I see it occasionally, people coming down Terrell Street the wrong way. And I haven't really looked myself to see if those signs are still there that say wrong way, but um, he'll come off Sheldon Place a lot and you have to go east. And he said he sees a lot of people that almost hit him in the door coming from, all the way from East Street on. So I'm not, I'm not personally sure. I haven't really looked at it myself. I also have noticed Norton, there's a, a kind of a funny way there too, where people often come out and try to get across the road there and, and shoot across the street. Uh, people going south shoot into Norton. And I remember there used to be a sign there, no left turn off of Main Street. So if we could refer the Traffic Committee to just mainly take a look at Terrell Street before there's a head on there or something, or or someone gets hit coming off Sheldon, rightfully coming off Sheldon Place, uh, that would be nice. So like I said, I'd like to make a motion to have the Traffic Committee look into Terrell Street, Sheldon and Norton, but mainly Terrell if they could, please. Second.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion that's been seconded to refer to the Traffic Committee, the Safety of Terrell Street, Sheldon and Norton. Um, is there any discussion or debate on this issue? Uh, Alderman Gillum?
Here we are.
Yeah, here you, Alderman Gillum.
We send these things off to different committees, but we don't get a report back. Could we add a little amendment to that? That we would, pardon me? Can you hear me now? Okay.
Every other word.
Um, we always send these things off to these committees that have no Alderman on it, uh, like the Traffic Committee. And we would like to have a letter sent to us that this was taken care of. A follow-up letter. I don't want it to come back in a, a big report, just a letter that it was taken care of. That's all. Just an amendment.
Um, Alderman Gillum, I, I see Alderman Madison standing. I believe she's on the committee. Maybe that's what she wants to comment about.
Oh, she is. Okay, fine. Thank you. That's all. Because I just want to make sure this follow-up.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I always take care to make sure that everything is, is addressed, um, to the best of the committee's ability. Um, if you like though, I'd be happy, um, to report on anything that the board sends there. I'd be happy to, to give a report back. I, that would be, uh, very simple to do. The only thing is, Billy, um, the Traffic Committee hasn't actually met since COVID started. Um, I know that, um, Chief Kokolan intends to, to meet, um, it's just a matter of when. So it might take a little bit longer, uh, this time. And then, um, Alderman Depoy's concern about, uh, Killington and the stop sign there was also sent to committee, but the committee just hasn't met yet. So, um, that is still on the agenda.
Thank you, Alderman Matt. Um, Alderman Depoy?
So, uh, thanks Alderman Mattis for bringing that up because you know, today I'm standing on my front yard and somebody blew right through at 3 o'clock, right through from the hospital side going toward the high school on Stratton Road doing probably 45 miles an hour. If somebody had been trying to go through, uh, that stop, that intersection at the same time, there would have been a major accident. And that's, that's today. So I mean, it's an ongoing issue. And it really needs to be dealt with sooner rather than later if somebody's killed out there.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tom, um, do you find it's also true coming down the hill from the high school as well?
Yeah, it absolutely happens in both directions. It's, it's usually Stratton, that the Stratton signs that get blown. It's not usually the Killington Avenue, um, that get blown. Um, I don't know why that is. Maybe they just expect to stop there.
Um, I don't know why that is. Maybe they just expect to stop there, but um Stratton, for some reason, people daydream in both directions and just completely blow through that uh intersection. And I've 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 witnessed several accidents, one that pushed a car over a hundred feet after impact.
I will uh I will remind the Traffic Committee and ask um when we're gonna meet again.
Thank you, Alderman Depoy and Mattis. Uh Alderman Garuso.
Funny, peculiar. I was gonna ask that about Alderman Depoy's uh motion because uh just the other day I was going north on Stratton and a uh station wagon with New York plates was ahead of me and turned up to go on to Killington Avenue. They actually use it as a bypass. They go along. I followed them on Town Line Road, but that car didn't stop at all. It it took a right-hand turn and headed up Killington Avenue uh like a rocket and it was a foreign car. He held the road quite nice, but it's really, I've seen some accidents there and they are bad ones. Alderman Depoy is right there, so something serious is gonna happen there. So there's a couple of hot issues that uh hopefully Alderman Mattis can take care of for us, or you know, they could do something about them, because I just just trying to be a little preventative here if we can, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Garuso. Alderwoman.
Can you hear me this time? Yay, okay. That was my primary reason, but also Rebecca, um, at that committee, um, I'm not sure Tom mentioned it or not, but further up toward the high school, the stop sign at Stratton and uh Lisa's at Hillside, where your mom is.
Hill Pond.
Oh, Hill Pond. So Stratton and Hill Pond, that sign there, I mean, Lisa's mom's got a lawn chair out front. I'm sure she'd be happy to have you sit there and watch people just go through that. And um she'll try and wave at him or stop at him and they just honk and yell at her. Uh, it's ridiculous. So it's intentional. People just ignore it. So yeah, if you could bring that up at that committee too, please.
Trying to prevent them from going through my mom's living room.
Thank you, Alderman Humphrey and Ryan. Uh Alderman Garuso.
Yeah, actually, I I don't know why they took it out, but if you go on the corner of her mom's house, there still should be a pipe that they cut off. But there used to be a flashing light there, so when people coming from Woodstock Avenue, they would, the light looked like it actually was laying in the road. And it was really kind of cool. It it let you know that at the foot of the, it's a dangerous kind of intersection because the sign's at the foot of a hill. And as you were coming toward the hill, you would see the light. It looked like the light was laying in the road. And many, many years ago, I was a kid, the city came and took the pole down. I don't know what the reason was. It was the cost of the light or the electricity to run the light, but that was a slick idea because you could see that light flashing from way back on here on Woodstock Avenue. Alderman Mattis should may maybe look into that because um I've watched some terrible accidents there in my life. I grew up on that corner and uh uh that was probably one of the neatest things they did was put that light in and then you could see it all the way down the hill. It was hung perfectly and then they they took the pole out and I don't know why.
Thanks, I'll ask about that.
So we have a motion that's been seconded to refer the streets of Terrell, Sheldon, and Norton to the Traffic Safety Committee, as well as a reminder to look at Killington Avenue. Um, is there any further discussion or debate? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Um, are there any further miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business to come before the board? Alderman Clifford.
Just uh for information, I'm gonna, I plan on holding a DPW Committee meeting uh Tuesday, the twenty-ninth uh to discuss uh the ongoing uh, uh just gonna get an update from the Commissioner on the water meter subject and also address the uh curb uh issues that Alderman Garuso talked about at our last meeting. So he'll be receiving a invitation to that.
Thank you, Alderman Clifford. Um Alderman Depoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I forget if it was the last meeting or the meeting before that, but I did make a motion uh to refer to committee to start talking about us as a board meeting in person there at City Hall or somewhere else, even St. Joe's or something like that. Um, I don't think that that's been taken up. At least I haven't seen that it has been. And with City Hall opening up on October first, that's prior to our next meeting, I believe, is on the fifth of October. Um, is I, I mean, do you anticipate us holding some kind of a meeting, Mr. Chair, so that we can uh develop some kind of protocol if we do begin meeting in City Hall again? Um, and have you, you know, have you given thought? Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Depoy. Uh Alderman Humphrey, I'll call on you. I believe you're Chair of that committee.
Thanks. Can you hear me now? All right, okay. So um actually, funny enough, uh Matt Blumer, I just received, he must have been seeing that question coming. Um, so I reached out to Matt about this because uh Blumer, because originally we were kind of holding off on that meeting, trying to figure out what City Hall was doing and wondering if um there had been any kind of open meeting law issues with having um a meeting in person that might potentially be limited to the number of attendees. So I'm um trying to read this email real quick. Um so in short, we'll have to um, we'll have to make sure it's legal under Governor Scott's orders to have the meeting in person. Uh Attorney Blumer says he'll need to double check. And then we'll have to come up, um, we'll have to work as a board with the safety officers to determine the uh procedures to make things safe and work well. Yeah, so he thinks, yeah, he thinks he's um, we should have, we're ready to have a committee meeting on it now. Because before we weren't sure that um, there was just too many scenarios to think through, but I think now that City Hall's opening up, maybe we'll give it a week or so and then we can get together on it, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Alderman Humphrey. Any further miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business to come before the board? Gillum.
Yes, I'd like to refer to um Charter and Ordinance Committee dealing with noise of new manufactured mufflers that are making a real racket in the neighborhood right now at two o'clock in the morning. People have been called, I've got five phone calls just last week. I guess we got someone running around with a very loud car and they put a manufactured aftermarket piece on there. I know there is a noise ordinance, but I'm not sure exactly what that is. So I would like to research that and see if there's something we can do to curb that. So I'd like to move that to Charter and Ordinance Committee.
I'll second for debate.
Uh so a motion has been seconded um to refer loud mufflers to the Charter and Ordinance Committee uh relative to is it a noise violation or not? Um, is there any discussion or debate on this issue?
If I may, um, we do have a noise ordinance, um, and I think that's easy enough to research as far as time of night that um that this is unacceptable. And I I I'm not far from Billy, so we do hear it. Um, I'm just not sure what Charter and Ordinance can do about it, uh because it if it's a noise disturbance, then it becomes an enforcement issue with patrol, with police. Um, it's similar to, we have a jake brake ordinance that disallows tractor trailers for using jake brakes when they're coming down West Street or Center Street Hills. Yet they do it all the time. So um, I I think I I'd rather, if I may, at least review the noise ordinance. Um, but I'm not sure what Charter and Ordinance can do about these these muffler type of things.
Alderman Gillum.
I just want the committee to research and see if that, if we have enough teeth in it, that's all um for enforcement. Um, obviously, um, people are calling nine-one-one, but by the time obviously they get here, they have disappeared. So um, I'm just wondering, there's enough teeth in there to give law enforcement what they need to do. I just want to look at it and see what more we can do to the ordinance or add to it if need be.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum. Alderwoman De.
So I think um to Bill's point, I'm glad to support this, but I think we have to focus on the noise ordinance and not necessarily. But I think there needs to be maybe a referral to look at Cleveland Avenue. Look at the intersection of Cleveland Avenue and Park Avenue, because this particular individual decides not only to be loud, but he decides to do um, I don't know what you call them, when you kind of burn the rubber and you twirl around the lot and you leave all that break marks in the road. And we do that every time, depending on what hours we choose to do it. And then they come up Park Avenue, go down Baxter and head towards State Street and you can hear uh every intersection of this particular individual. So I think it's more a referral to a police, to the Police Department, say that there needs to be some coverage down here at night um and see if this individual can be uh caught. Besides me, because I am trying.
Uh, I'll agree to that amendment to send that to the the Police Commission for review uh in the Police Department, and um I will take it upon myself to research the ordinance for the committee and see if there's anything we can do to add or improve, or nothing at all, depending on what I find. So I'll pull that motion and just refer it to the Police Commission.
Okay, so Alderman Gillum are withdrawing your motion of referral to the Charter and Ordinance Committee, and you would like to make a motion to refer the issue of vehicle noise to the Police Commission to be discussed.
That's correct.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Alderman Garuso.
I'd like that motion better. I remember my last tour on the board, we were working on uh noise ordinances and you know, a fire truck with a siren at two in the morning versus a train versus a chainsaw versus a snowplow. It's a tough thing to nail down, but but kids doing this or people doing this intentionally, um, that's that's a different animal, and I think you're right on that to the police and having them stop it. It's hard to to pick a noise and a compression brake, uh, you know, that's a different thing too. Uh uh you know, the, I hear those all the time too, coming down the mountain and they're not in our our area, but um, yeah, that's a, that's something I think the police should go after and and I support that motion a lot. I think that's gonna be easier than trying to figure out sounds and decibels and all that compared to sounds that we do allow, like sirens and whatever. So it's a great motion and I'm in. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Garuso. Alderwoman Ryan.
Yeah, I know Commissioner Sargent is on um this call. I'm just wondering if this is something that has already been looked in years previous or if this is something that is newly brought to the commission, muffler and screeching tires. I was just curious.
Um, Police Commissioner Sargent, would you like to answer?
Yeah, is my microphone working? Everybody can hear me? Excellent, thank you. So I've been on the Police Commission for six or seven years now. And in my memory, this question's not come before the Police Commission before. As you know, it's the role of the Police Commission is, the role of the Police Mission is the oversight of the Police Department. It's not the creation of new ordinances. But I can certainly ask Commander Sheldon to look at the calls for service that we receive from that area and see if uh that would dictate any need for additional enforcement in that area at certain times of day, such as the wee dark hours that uh some of the Alderman have mentioned here tonight. So I'm I'm happy to call Commander Sheldon and ask him to look into that for us.
Thanks, Commissioner Sargent.
Thank you, Commissioner Sargent. So we have a motion and it has been seconded to refer to the Police Commission vehicular noise. Um, is there any further discussion or debate? I'm hearing and seeing none. Uh all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any further uh miscellaneous motions, resolutions, or new business to come before this board? If Alderman Garuso.
Just before I make a motion to adjourn or anybody does, I, weren't we supposed to get a link to uh Executive Session? Because I didn't get it before our meeting, so I'm gonna check.
Yes, so the final thing we have on the agenda is the Executive Session. The link I sent would have got a reply from uh Attorney Blumer. So with the link I sent, if you go to that email, you should see Attorney Blumer's email as well. Perfect.
I got it. Thank you. I got it. Thank you very much.
Excellent.
Motion to adjourn to to the other, to the Executive Session.
We can't quit adjourn yet. I gotta get the language from Attorney Blumer to help us go into Executive Session, so Attorney Blumer, I'll hand it over.
Okay, uh it would be a motion to find premature general public knowledge regarding the negotiation of a contract would clearly place the city at substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the board's stance on the items to be negotiated and will include confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the city.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Um, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Attorney Blumer?
Um, then it would be a motion to enter into Executive Session with the inclusion of the Mayor, Police Commission Chairperson, Treasurer, and City Attorney to discuss the negotiation of a contract as allowed under Title One, Section Three Thirteen A One A and Title One, Section Three Thirteen A One F.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We see you on the other side in Executive Session.